Good afternoon, everyone. Today is October fourteenth, 2025. For the record, it's 1:00 PM, and this is a Prescott City Council Study Session. We'll start with roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilwoman Furworth.
Here.
Councilman Gambogi.
I am here.
Councilman Grady.
Here.
And the record will reflect that Councilman Montoya and Councilman Moore are excused from the meeting.
City Clerk, we have two items for discussion today. Would you read item 3A, please?
Presentation, discussion, and possible direction regarding the status of the City Council's strategic plan.
Okay.
Okay, let's jump right into that, City Manager.
Let's do that. Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. Happy to be here. Dallin Kimball, City Manager, and grateful for, I think, two opportunities we have today. One is to celebrate the vision of the Council and putting together the strategic plan. And there's really nothing better on the staff side as having, you know, clear direction and an idea where we're headed and some good priorities. And then for staff who've been working hard to make so many of these objectives reality over the last almost eighteen months now, sixteen, eighteen months since we first adopted it. The strategic plan itself calls for an update to the Mayor and Council every six months. So that's this update. The last one came about budget time. And crazy, I think we're six months from that again. But to help with this presentation, I'll also be calling on a number of the department heads who've been leading these efforts so that we can get insights from each one and be able to dig in a little bit while also moving forward and completing the update in time for our second agenda item. So with that in mind, we'll start with, at the beginning, strategic priority number one, which is public safety. And I'm going to ask Chief Dura to lead us off here with some information about how it's going in the Fire Department.
All right. Mayor and Council Holger Dura, Fire Chief. So yes, as we mentioned, there is quite a lot of activity that has happened since we last provided you with a strategic plan update around particularly the fire stations. At the next council voting meeting, we're going to be bringing a design contract, a land purchase contract, as well as a construction contract for our training tower, which are all 478-related items. We have really good progress on the two strategically located stations. We've settled on sites for both of those, and they are right in the bull's eye of our coverage maps, which is going to improve our response times. The other piece, which is the second bullet, the ninety percent of response times being within eight minutes, we were able to place a forty-hour additional engine company in service starting on August eighteenth. So Engine Seventy-Six is actually in service part of the time, about two and a half years prior to the fire station being built. And the reason for that is the commitment that we made to our citizens. The data was real, and we need to start impacting those response times. And that company currently is temporarily quartered at our training center on Sundog Ranch, which is obviously also in that area that we were trying to fill with Prescott Lakes. And we're looking to do probably in about a month or so to see what our response time impact is. The reason why it is Monday through Friday, eight to five, is because it's when our call volume is the highest in the city. And so it's really targeting the biggest need. The other component that really is, I think, very important is that we're also still continuing our efficiency measures. So it's not just about the capital. We're really wanting to make sure that we continue to look into software packages such as computerated dispatch improvements. We're working with PRCC right now to improve the triage system so that we can actually send the appropriate number of resources to calls based on risk. And then we're also improving our station alerting system. And the reason why that's really important to highlight is that right now we have a sequential toning system that's considered a legacy system. And for larger emergencies like a structure fire, it takes approximately fifteen seconds just to complete the toning process. This is going to be a system that only does that instantaneously. It also reduces the workload of the dispatcher by automatically dispatching based on the information they enter into CAD. And we're expecting approximately fifteen to twenty-second saving in that total response time that is our bogey that we're trying to reduce. So that's-
Councilman Gambogi, do you have a question for the Chief?
Sure do. Chief Dura, I was there when Joe Baines tore down the old training tower. Where's the new one going?
Going basically in the same spot.
Same spot?
Yes.
Any difference?
Yeah, actually quite a bit of difference. So a few things is, first of all, the height is going to be increased. It is also not a building that is built out of bricks. So this is going to be actually made out of corrugated shipping containers, which sounds a little bit haphazard. It's not at all. It's top-notch technology, modern technology. It also enables us to do a lot more training scenarios that are varied. The old building was very static, and obviously it had an issue with its structural integrity. And the other component about this particular product is if, at a later point, we were to relocate our public safety training assets, we can actually take that tower with us. So-
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, that's result one. And, oh, thank you. Then, yes, let's talk about the locations. So Station Seventy-Three, and you'll see this in your council packet for next week, is going to be at Eighty-Nine and the Pippin Trail Roundabout. We've done some great work with Public Works and our property acquisition team. We'll talk about exactly what that purchase looks like next week, or in two weeks. But what I really want to emphasize on this particular parcel is that that is the relocation of the airport fire station. We still have responsibilities at the airport, and we're getting an FAA-funded specific ARF and OPS facility that Director Kreider can talk about as well. And we'll still have those services, but it's that structure-engine component that's moving to that location. What's on your screen right there is a very important component, because if you look at the coverage map, that coverage map looks quite a bit different than the one that we showed you as we were preparing for 478, as you know. We've got a lot more things in the green. And just as a reminder, the green is a travel time under four minutes. And the yellow up here is a travel time between four and five and a half minutes. And that's where we can have positive outcomes. So we're starting to change the ability of us to impact outcomes here in the city of Prescott. The other component of why that station's going right there is because you see that bridge cut over that is going to go into the back end of Granite Dells. We have fair certainty that that is a future capital project that we can rely on, and that's going to help us with the coverage in the Granite Dells neighborhood. The other component there as well is that Central Arizona Fire and Medical Authority currently runs about half the time those calls into the, I guess we would say, the eastern half of Granite Dells. So between those two stations and our automatic aid agreement, we're going to have fairly decent coverage. That map that you see up there does not assume automatic aid coverage from Central Arizona, because we wanted to really paint the picture of what our impact is. Station Seventy-Six is slated for State Ride Eighty-Nine and Prescott Lakes Parkway. Specifically, it's going to be near the Pivine Trailhead, my apologies. And that is the parcel that the Police Department was originally looking at, but that parcel was too small for their needs, but it fits our needs very well. And again, another project that we're working on collaboratively with Public Works.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Chief Dura. Just, I think it's always worth the point of saying with 478 that we said we would do something. We're doing what we said we would do. And it's great to see the progress moving forward. We're grateful to everybody who supported that initiative and looking forward to these new facilities coming online soon. The last part of the first result in our public safety section, and apologize, this is a little bit smaller on a TV than it is on my desktop sometimes, but has to do with cellphone coverage. And we do continue to see applications and interest in improving equipment on existing cell towers. This map that you can see here is the most recent FCC coverage map for the city of Prescott. Blue means there's at least one provider in the area, and the pink color is where there's not coverage. Within the city limits of Prescott, just an eyeball estimate, it's ninety-five to ninety-eight percent covered. There's a few little spots on the north side of Yavapai Hills. There's a couple little spots in the Dells. There's a little spot kind of on the northwest corner. The greatest need seems to be in the county around the city. But this is an area where we've continued to work, and we see improvements. The most recent improvement that we processed was a Verizon application to improve their tower that is near Costco that we're hoping will help extend that range for the Yavapai Hills folks. But good coverage there and something we're continuing to pursue.
Councilman Gambogi.
I think this is really important, because days of relying on landlines have gone, and everybody's relying on smartphones. And we continue to get misinformation about cellphone towers and cellphone coverage. And I think it's, we need to make these decisions based on facts and the safety of our residents.
Thank you. I'll note here as well that there are requirements on the carriers that whether you have a plan with a particular carrier or no plan at all, if you have a phone and you're calling 911, they have to pick it up. They have to make sure you make contact. Good. Let's go to result two in public safety. And this will, for this one, we'll turn it over to Chief Bonney.
Hello. Good afternoon. We're very excited to talk about this, and I appreciate that City Manager asked both Chief Dura and I to present on this, because we've been working diligently to move the needle on these really important strategic goals that we have set for ourselves. So here you see result number two, full staffing for the Police Department, proactive community policing in downtown, and increased traffic enforcement. And I'm excited to report to you today that we are indeed moving that needle. We have actually three new officers who have completed their field training recently. So we have two that completed the Police Academy and have finished their field training, and one lateral police officer who has finished his field training recently. So they are out there making a difference on our streets. We also have a lateral police officer from Scottsdale who will be starting in a few weeks, and we anticipate that her training will be fairly abbreviated, and we can expect her to make an impact fairly quickly. We have seven police recruits at NARTA right now. They will be graduating in December of this year, and we anticipate that they will be successful in their field training and be solo police officers around May of 2026. Our Training and Recruiting Officer, Sean Hilton, has been working diligently to test. We test once a month and continue to hold that very high standard for the police officers that we hire. We're hoping to put at least six or seven in the next Police Academy, which starts in January of 2026, and continue to search for qualified lateral police officers, which we find is a really great addition to our Patrol Bureau in particular. So we're actively seeking those lateral police officers. We're also increasing our community policing in downtown. So with the addition of these new police positions, we have continued to increase and improve our Community Services section, which as you probably recognize or know them as the Bike Patrol Officers. During the summer and during school breaks, that section is enhanced by our School Resource Officers. When they're not in school, they come out and kind of bolster our Community Services section. So over the past several months, we've had sixteen targeted enforcement with our Community Services Team to include everything from special events to noise abatement details in downtown Prescott.
Pardon me, Chief, but Councilwoman Furworth has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for you. What was the staffing for this fiscal year? Total officers? And then where are you versus that? And will the plans you just outlined get us there by the end of this fiscal year for full staffing?
So with Prop 478, we added, I believe, a total of fourteen new police officer positions. That puts us at a total of ninety-nine sworn police officer positions. By the end of this fiscal year, do I believe we're going to be at that position filled? No, I don't. I think that's going to take us probably closer to two years to fill those positions, just knowing that it takes about a year to hire and train police officers. One of the things that we look for, as I mentioned, that's really important for us to continue to track down is those laterals. Those laterals come to us already Arizona Post-certified. They come with experience, and they are a great addition to, what I would describe as we have, we have great police officers in our Patrol Bureau, and a lot of them are younger and new. And so when we add lateral police officers from other agencies that have experience, it really does help to kind of build up that level of experience in patrol. So I'd anticipate in about maybe 2027, summer of 2027, we can have those positions full.
So that was what I was, I was just trying to understand. The goal says by fiscal year twenty-eight, we will have full staffing. And I was just trying to get a sense of, do you feel like we're going to make it at that goal? And it sounds like your answer is yes. So that's fantastic.
I do. We're working really, really hard. Everybody's a recruiter out there, and I think we're going to be successful at that. Yeah. So I talked about those bike patrols. Public engagement is also something that we focus on a lot of. As you know, or may know, this month is Pink Patch Month at Prescott Police Department, and our Community Outreach Specialist, Callie Hill, is working very hard at those community outreach events. We are all around the community, doing everything from block watch to those Pink Patch events to any other community events that you can think of. We just concluded our Citizens Academy for the fall and had tremendous success with that, and we'll continue with that program in the spring. And then the third part of that was an enhanced presence with our Traffic Safety Section. So along with our Community Services Section, we have also endeavored to enhance our Traffic Safety Section. One of the things that we know is a priority for our community and also for us is traffic safety in our community. We want to reduce speeds, reduce crashes, and certainly reduce serious injury and fatality crashes in our community. So we really want to enhance that Traffic Safety Section and educate our community and enforce our traffic laws. So you can see that we have done that through an increased, not only citations but warnings. We, like I said, we want to focus on education and education first to reduce the behavior and then also enforcement when we need to do that. So continuing those areas, reducing those collisions where we can. We also have added a commercial vehicle inspector. Most recently, he was selected several weeks ago and will be joining our team over at Traffic Safety in the next couple of weeks. We expect to have him trained to inspect commercial vehicles. Within the coming months, we'll have his vehicle outfitted with scales, and he'll be visiting the different commercial businesses here in town to inspect those commercial vehicles. We know that the wear and tear on our streets is of an important nature to all of us. And so inspecting and enforcing those heavy vehicles with the loads will be important. So he'll be doing that.
Excuse me, Chief, but Mayor Protem Cantelmi has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Bonney, I wanted to thank you, first of all, for participating in the Senator Highway, Mount Vernon discussion the other day. And on behalf of the neighborhood groups, which we're now kind of all organizing in the historic area, talking a lot about noise abatement, which has been a really big issue the last few years, and of course, the volume of traffic on Mount Vernon with the eight thousand seven hundred plus a day. Everybody was very excited to hear about this, the community policing. I think that's going to make a huge difference. And I know for several years, I've been answering questions about, you know, why aren't they down here every day? And I've explained, we've got bigger fish to fry right now. But once we get this 478 money coming in and we're fully staffed, we can start to address the things that go on in some of the neighborhoods, in particular the historic neighborhoods. We really get hit hard with a lot of that stuff. So thank you very much for that. Appreciate it.
Yeah. And I mean, I would say we certainly prioritize that. But one of the things that I just want to make sure everybody understands is that, yes, that is a priority. But if we take what we talked about yesterday at that meeting and understand that we've got dozens and dozens of neighborhoods that want that same attention from us as well. And so our goal is to not only prioritize those neighborhoods, we want people to feel safe where they live and where they work, but also to prioritize the streets and the roadways that we know have a high incident of collisions and high incidence of serious injury collisions, and really spread out our resources where it's most effective and efficient, and then also hit those areas that we know are quality of life issues and are important safety issues for everybody as well. So I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chief. I'll make one just quick note for anybody noticing here on the slide. August was the last full month that we had, so we provided it because it was the most recent month. We had some staff changes in that month. Normally, our parking citations and warnings are similar to 2024, as those continue to come up. The last part of, or result three, the last section in the Public Safety Section talks about the airport. Oh, go ahead.
Excuse me, Dallin, but Councilwoman Furworth had a question.
To help myself, I love data, and I just don't like point-in-time data. Is there any way we can get to statistical charts and things that say, are we trending in the right direction? Are we trending in the wrong direction? Because it's really hard for me to save fifteen, twenty-four months of individual point-in-time reports and do it. Is that your goal as, you know, you build capability in the organizations that we could start seeing trend charts that the public can easily understand and interpret?
Yeah, eventually. And this is, I don't want to steal too much of Mike's thunder. But as we get into performance management, performance metrics, we've talked about having level-of-service metrics, but also getting as much of it as we can into platforms like OpenGov, so that they're easy to access, easy to find, updated in real time, and people can see them in a way that, so for example, with OpenGov, where we can directly connect the performance management, part of the management, I suppose, with the budget, and they can see how the dollars are making an impact or not making an impact, and then we can have policy discussions about each one. Very good. So with the airport, in many ways, we are ahead of schedule in terms of being able to acquire the land that we need around the airport for safety reasons. And really, in terms of safety, that effort is, you know, is done. We've purchased those properties. We've also been having some really good conversations, as we did a couple of weeks ago, about the potential for moving the runway and creating both a little bit of a noise buffer for some of the neighbors and more efficient operations and expanded operations, so as we could handle larger aircraft, especially for wildfire reasons. Also, in this year's legislative session, we were able to get an allocation for a new ramp on the, directly adjacent to the Forest Service ramp that will, during fire season, primarily be used for helicopters and other firefighting apparatus. Other times of the year, it could be used for other things. This, Rick presented a couple of weeks ago very eloquently about some of the other plans going around here, but a lot of infrastructure and progress at the airport. I'm really excited about that, really excited about our third flight, starting this month, starting Thursday. So a lot of great stuff going on here as well. Let's move into strategic priority number two, which is our dynamic economy. I will introduce John Heine to do that. John has been known by a lot of people as our communications guy. I will present him to you as our newly-minted Director of Economic Initiatives. He's been working on economic development for a number of years, but we're excited to see him focused in that area and help us to continue to make progress. So, John, go ahead.
Thank you very much. So looking at results one and two, the city will proactively identify and attract new businesses in the community, as evidenced by the completion of ongoing implementation of the Economic Development Strategic Plan. So I'm going to talk a little bit about both the recruitment and the strategic plan for you. So since you adopted the strategic plan last year in November, we have been working with focus groups, we call them sector groups, in three different areas, business leaders in three different areas, including healthcare, advanced manufacturing, and aviation. And for all three of these, as the meetings have gone on, there's a lot of different priorities, workforce development, workforce retention. But what's really come to the fore in all three of these committees is recruitment. We see the need to recruit businesses that will help our students stay here, have options to stay here instead of going somewhere else for work. So all three of the sector groups really see the need for recruitment. So some of the areas that we're looking at for priority right now, aviation and avionics companies, there's a heavy airport influence here. They've got a great group, and they really, Dr. Richer and Rick Kreider have been really helpful in putting this group together. So aviation and avionics companies.
Excuse me, John, but Councilman Gambogi had a question.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if my timing's right. First of all, congratulations on being the czar of economics.
The czar of economics. Can I put that on my business card?
And secondly, just for the residents here, people listening in, we made a trip down to Emery Riddle in Daytona last year. And if my memory serves me correctly, I think they have a hundred and ninety acres down there, and they're landlocked. But they have five hundred and fifty acres up here. And, Dallin, I think they called it the Innovation Center, and they brought in four hundred Boeing engineers. So I think pursuing development with Emery Riddle is good for the community. It does help keep people here and affords them the opportunity to use that five hundred and fifty acres.
Absolutely. And thank you. You actually gave me a great segue, because one of those recruitment areas is the Innovation Center. Dr. Richer, being part of the aviation sector group, has been very, very productive in talking about an Innovation Center here in Prescott. So that is on the list of recruitment priorities. So in this case, it's not just a business that we're recruiting, but we're going to put together an Innovation Center for entrepreneurs, for people that want to develop new products, but also some of these companies as well. So you were right on. We're right on that. Another one that's emerging, and Dr. Richer's helped us with this, is advanced air mobility and unmanned systems. So we hear about drones and the increased use of drones, unmanned systems. Dr. Richer and the group see a potential to recruit companies that can test. Because of our elevation, because of some of the factors that affect our airport and our flights, testing in a unique environment like Prescott could be something that's a differentiator. So without giving away too much, we're going to be looking at companies like that that can test some of these systems as well. Also, we mentioned the Innovation Center. And then also support companies, shifting gears a little bit, but support companies for the chip industry, the microchip industry, what's going on. Arizona is front and center on the world stage for onshoring manufacturing of microchips. There was a huge conference in Phoenix last week. People from all over the world came. There were thirteen hundred companies there, and they're all looking to support the efforts of TSMC. Now, understanding our resource limitations here- Now, understanding our resource limitations here, there are companies that make sense, follow-on companies that may want something different that don't have to be in the valley or use a lot of water, but can be here in this great environment and innovate, work with Emory Riddle students to innovate. So we're going to be looking at that because that is going to be an absolutely huge for all of Arizona and kind of what's coming for that. Any questions about result one?
Councilwoman Freworth.
Thank you, Mayor. There's been a lot of discussion about healthcare in town, and I know the group's been up and running, but any progress to report in year one of that focus group? Because I think the citizens are desperate for some progress.
Yeah, the need is understood completely, and we need, you know, we understand the need for the diversity of care and services. So the group is working on that. Most of the, when these groups started out, it was a lot about workforce, recruiting doctors, recruiting physicians to come here. There's a lot of issues that go along with recruiting a physician. It's not just about them, but what about their spouse? What are they going to do? Providing systems and job opportunities. So we are looking mainly at physician recruitment at this point, but I think we will evolve into recruiting healthcare systems and providers as well. But it's been, the focus has been mainly on doctors, physicians, getting more here in the ecosystem. Any other questions?
Councilman Grady.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. With respect to the ongoing implementation, did I see somewhere where you also have an overall kind of steering committee?
We have three of the sector groups, as I mentioned, that are going right now, and so that's the healthcare, advanced manufacturing, aviation. There's not a steering committee in place at this point.
Okay. And then, so are then the other consultants still under contract doing work on competitive assessment?
Yes, so right now, we are finalizing, finishing out the contract with Civic Solutions. They're the ones that helped develop the economic, they're the ones that have helped us lead the sector groups. Right now, we're under contract with them through the end of this year. I think what we're going to do as staff is evaluate, where's the next need? For example, a consulting firm that can assist us in identifying opportunities or recruitment to help implement the staff. So I think it's about, we're kind of finishing phase one in the planning and information gathering, and we're going to move into the recruitment, business retention as well. Going out and visiting with the businesses is going to be an important part of what we're doing. And I'm actually currently doing a business survey on participateprescott.com so that businesses can tell us what's going on in the environment, you know, what's keeping them up at night, what are they worried about? Are they planning to expand? How can we help? So we're working on that as well.
And from a business recruitment standpoint, also recall that we were at some point interviewing potential candidates. Can you speak publicly about where we are in that process?
Yeah, thank you. We do have an offer that's been preferred to a candidate, so we're just waiting for the official signing on the dotted line, so we're hopeful to announce someone to assist in economic development very soon.
Thank you.
Okay. So result number two on this slide, proactively identifying and attracting new commercial development to serve the residential development occurring in the northern part of the community. So I can tell you that we, our office has been speaking with several different, the commercial development community, and I can tell you that the commercial developers, there is interest in the northern areas. They see the market potential there, you know, with the houses that are going in, with the growth that's going there. So I can't give you a lot of details, some of these are sensitive, but I can tell you that there is a lot of interest from commercial development in that area right now. So we're hoping soon there'll be some sort of an announcement, but I can't really go into much more detail than that. But it is moving forward, and I think the important point for you to know is the market in that area, the market in Prescott in general, is attracting attention from commercial operators, from retailers and other operators. So that's good news.
Councilman Gamboge.
Just to follow up on Lois's question on healthcare, is Yavapai College having a symposium this weekend on healthcare?
I am not sure. There is a workforce symposium, like a workforce summit that's taking place that they're part of. I think that's next week, but I'm not aware of a healthcare.
Councilman Grady, do you have another question?
Yes, thank you. So, under the next bullet point, there's a mention of hotel conference and retail studies.
Yes.
Is that being handled in-house?
Yeah, well, we actually, we completed those studies, and we have both of those. So retail, hotel and retail feasibility studies, as I'm sure you probably know, those are tools for us to use to help market Prescott. So these do demographic analysis, they look at potential sites, and then when you're talking to someone who's interested, you can hand them this document, they can have immediate data and information about where they might develop. So those were done about a year ago, actually, and we have been using those, sending those out to our property owners, the commercial real estate community, you know, as another tool in the marketing bucket. Probably going to be updating them because the market changes very quickly.
You know, John, there's probably another aspect we could start thinking about. I mean, in my professional career, I lived in Dallas, I lived in Houston, of course, I lived in the LA area, and at a certain point, when you start talking about commuting, you don't talk about distance, you talk about time. And as TSMC and LG and the other data centers continue to develop in the, maybe just south of the Anthem area, and as we finally complete the flex lanes, we may be able to have people commuting to those areas more quickly than they could if they lived in Tempe and some of these other areas. So if we can focus on that, then we could have some high-earning people that are living here, working there, and then being able to recruit them and spending their discretionary dollars with us to help our TPT collections and things like that. And as you mentioned, there will be some ancillary companies that want to form, but if we can keep them focused on the time element rather than the distance, that might be helpful in bringing them here.
No, that's a great point, and it is something that was talked about at the semiconductor conferences, where are these people all going to live? They're talking about bringing in tens of thousands of people to work around this area, and obviously, North Phoenix. My kids live in Anthem, they're going to explode in Anthem. So, but, the corridor northbound and Highway 69 out from here out, I think it is going to make a big impact. We're actually getting ready to start a new marketing campaign. We're going to talk about commute times as part of that, as part of the quality of life, so it's a good thought. Okay, I'm going to move forward very quickly. Next one would be number three, result number three, and that is tourism economy. So I'm happy to report that when, a year ago, when you were here and we sort of set a baseline for visitor spending, we used fiscal year '24, and that amount was $205 million. We projected out over time how much we'd be bringing in, but the updated spending for fiscal year '25, a year later, is now $252 million, and I think that's reflected there on the slide. So we have increased visitor spending. We know that our bed tax collections have been down a little bit, and occupancy has been flat, a little bit lower. So what this is telling me is we're getting day trip. We're getting more folks coming in for the day, maybe to enjoy our dining and shopping, but their spending. We'd love to get those heads in beds and get the hotels back up, and we're working on that, but I think the big jump in spending, we have to assume, is coming from day trip visitors. So just want to make that point to you as well. And that's all I have.
Thanks, John. I'll note here also, kind of the mixed results sometimes that we see in our economic data over the last several months. So this will be something that we're watching closely, both trying to drive it in a healthy environment, but also watching the environment around us and trying to preserve that the best we can.
Thank you.
The last section here under the economy has to do with our airport. I think we've addressed several of these issues already, continue to see opportunities here. It's worth, I think, calling out Emory Riddle as great partners in this effort and very interested in working together with us to help attract business, not just expanding their operations, but expanding our ability to provide jobs and build our economy. So they've been wonderful to work with. The next strategic priority has to do with our infrastructure, and I'll turn the microphone to Gwen Roach.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So in the area of transportation and traffic, one of the goals or one of the strategies was to reduce traffic injuries and fatalities. As you know, our pedestrian bike traffic and advisory committee, and I'll just call them PB-TAC now, group, we hear from the community often when they're having issues in their neighborhood or they have concerns, and they almost always center around speeding. One of the tools that we use to address those kinds of concerns, we do signing packages, striping packages, we did several of those in the last year, but we also are introducing radar speed vac signs. Those are the signs that come up, say, you're doing 35 in a 25. In order to not have that always be on the wish list, that we can try other sorts of mitigation strategies. First, we wanted to develop a policy that would prioritize locations for installation of that type of a mechanism. Those cost about $10,000 apiece. We do budget for some of those annually. So we did develop a policy, we've taken it to PB-TAC, and it'll be coming to council soon for their consideration. Some of the places where, for example, we might use that would be on Park Avenue, Hacioma Lane, locations like that, where we have residential streets that are feeding into minor collectors or major collector streets. By fiscal year '27, reduction in traffic congestion, we, in 2025, staff implemented a traffic signal, timing coordination of all the signals along Willow Creek Road, as the mayor knows. This year, we're working on the Iron Springs Whipple-Montezuma Street, that has been completed. We also installed coordinated signal timing at SR89 from Yavp to Prescott Lake Parkway. And while that's a small corridor, it is a matter of coordinating the signal so that people can continue to move through on the roadway. By FY '28, we're looking for reduction in pedestrian injuries and fatalities. To help get us there, the city, in partnership with Central Yavapai Metropolitan Planning Organization, or I'm going to call them SIMPO now, SIMPO, we applied for an SS4 grant for the Dexter Neighborhood Study to help us address the interface between pedestrians, bikes, and traffic along that roadway. We were granted that grant for $150,000. It includes a study as well as a 15% design concept report. This year, in the capital improvement program, we are designing the sidewalk redesign of the sidewalks along Miller Valley Road from Gurley Street to Four Points intersection. We received complaint in 2024, 2025, the lack of mobility for ADA accessibility along that corridor, and so we've entered into design for that project. We have not yet identified a funding source for construction, but we're hopeful to receive grant monies for that. We also did a review of all the mid-block crosswalks for signing and lighting to make sure that they meet current standards this year. That includes Gurley and Brandon Street, Gurley and Corey, Summit and Gurley, Hazely and Senator, and Mount Vernon and Oak Streets. Next slide, please. Were there any questions on the previous slide? Okay.
Mayor Protem.
I appreciate that. A question about the first subject we were talking about. Did you, I know that in the past, we've had a little delay in our striping projects because we've had to wait for the striping truck.
Correct.
Now, I understand we have our own now. Is it here and is it functioning?
So, Mayor Protem, we previously used a contracted consultant to do our striping. We still have a contract with him this year. We're currently in the process of procuring the, there are three major pieces of infrastructure that are needed to do our own striping here in the city, but we're right in the middle of procuring that. So we're kind of in a hybrid year where we are still using the consultant, but we're in the process of buying the machines that we need and hiring the staff that we need to run them. So yes, that was budgeted in this fiscal year.
So if that happens, do you anticipate this will be quicker? If we have, you know, a site set up like the pothole site where we can call and get a pothole replaced or fixed right away? Can we do that with striping?
I would say that it will likely occur more quickly.
Yeah.
But striping is also weather and temperature dependent, so it depends on what kind of striping needs to be done and where. But yes, to some degree, we should see an improvement in the time turnaround for that.
Great, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Mayor, the measures here by fiscal year, I know we don't have the details of any plan or milestones, but are you, what's your confidence level about making progress and achieving the goals by these fiscal years that are here?
I have every confidence we'll, we will at least have a strategy to move forward by these timeframes, if not implementing these strategies.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Long-range transportation goals with SIMPO, ADOT, et cetera, to champion the development of a regional network, including the highway and regional roadways. So the Arizona Rural Transportation Summit happens every year. Last year, we were fortunate, it happened here in Prescott. Mayor and several of you attended, which we always appreciate. This happens on an annual basis, so actually, I think it's happening next week, Mayor. In Sierra Vista, the next transportation summit is in Sierra Vista. Gives us an opportunity to network with our peers, meet our state representatives, and talk to them about little pet projects we have to see if we can't get some funding and things like that, which we do. As far as exploring grant opportunities with SIMPO, we have been very successful in the last year getting grant money with the cooperation and help of SIMPO. The Dexter Neighborhood Safe Streets for All Grant was awarded to us for $150,000. That project is from Gurley, north to Rosser Street, and from Gale Gardner to Montezuma. It's a study to look at the pedestrian, bike, and traffic in that neighborhood to see how we can make that safer, work better for the folks who live there. It's an economically challenged neighborhood, and so a lot of them rely on alternate means of transportation than cars, and so we'll be looking at that to, we'll not only get a study, but we'll get a 15% design concept report from that. In cooperation with that, SIMPO, on the city's behalf, applied for what is called the Downtown Prescott Safe and Smart Streets Initiative. That is a similar study that will run from Gurley, around the Gurley Park Avenue area to Washington Street, and from the Aubrey Carlton area to Merritt and Sixth Street. So essentially, these two projects will combine, they have a common boundary, and expand our study area. The good news about this particular grant is that it was awarded for $600,000. On our behalf, SIMPO went out to ADOT to see if they could get the 20% match, and they were successful in getting the $125,000 match, so that study will come to the city at no cost.
Excuse me, Gwen, Councilwoman Gamboge had a question.
Just a comment. Every time we talk about cycling, I think back to my days of cycling. I cycled from the Illinois River to the Atlantic Ocean. I've done, I don't know how many centuries. And we try to accommodate cycling in the city, and I think we need to get a message to cyclists that they can't bicycle around town without a helmet, without a vibrant-colored jersey, and jeans and a brown coat doesn't cut it. So it takes both sides when you cycle to have a safe environment.
Thank you for your comments. So this year, we will be receiving $875,000 for these studies, and we're eager to get started here in the third quarter of fiscal year '26. In addition to that, as Mayor Protem and Councilmember Freworth know, SIMPO has also offered to pay for a roadway safety assessment along Mount Vernon Street. We appreciate their generosity in not only identifying something that we can do to help address those citizens' concern, but paying for the study as well. And that should be kicking off here as well in the third quarter of fiscal year 2026.
Mayor Protem, do you have a comment on that?
Real quick, Gwen, could you just give a quick synopsis of what comes out of those reports in terms of how it benefits the city itself, but also the neighborhoods? Why don't you produce the RSA or the reports?
Well, we haven't developed the scope of work yet, but it's my understanding that it will include things like traffic counts, the kinds of vehicles that are traveling along the roadway. We already have some historical and preliminary counts that run basically from Hazely all the way to Sheldon Street is the extent of the study, and it will make recommendations for ways that we can mitigate concerns that the neighborhood had. So part of the study will include the neighborhood itself, and so until we receive some of that feedback, I can't tell you exactly all the things that we're going to address, but it is our intention to address as many of their concerns in the study as we can.
But is it true, and I heard this in one of the meetings or discussions, just briefly, if we have those reports, it's a way to substantiate the ask? if we have those reports, it's a way to substantiate the ask? If we were to go to ADOT, or we to, you know, go to a large, to try to basically ask for money to do some of these projects? These reports will back up with data of why we need some of these grants?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. These studies are a necessity to applying for grant monies to either design a recommendation that comes from it or the actual construction, and sometimes both.
You know, I think this is very important for everybody who lives here. We know, we've seen the growth the past several years. But when you're dealing with, you know, the Transportation League or whatever they call themselves and some of the other, they're not aware of the kind of explosion we've had in traffic. I mean, anybody that drives down 69 now, you know, to get out of town, let's say, it's bumper to bumper almost all hours of the day. These are massive changes that we, you know, as taxpayers are having to pay for with our tax dollars. So anytime we can produce some, some data that we can use to go and attract money into our community, it's the best thing that we can do. So money well spent. I'm happy about that grant. Thank you.
Right. Moving on to projects and grants. In addition to the ones that I've already mentioned, these, staff has been spending the $3 million that we received from the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority as part of the AMI meter replacement program. We've completely spent our grant reimbursement, which reduced our project from 12 million to 9 million from the city water fund. And it also promotes our Eye on Water Program, which allows individuals to put an app on their phone or their computer that allows them to see their actual water use in real time, either by the day, the hour, or the week, however they choose to do it. In addition to that, we received a federal Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant, or, I'm sorry, and Conservation Block Grant Award of $75,000. That grant was used to replace LPS street light heads with LED street light heads. We were able to replace over 200 of them. LED lights are more energy efficient and save the city energy costs. And the last one is the SR 89 Multimodal Path Study. Again, this was funded with SIMPO's assistance through the Safe Streets for All. It's a bridging project from 89, Highway 89 South, just north of the, of the most furthest roundabout into the Willow Creek Road, actual roadway. There's a gap there. So if you're riding your bicycle along Highway 89 southbound, and you want to come into the city, you kind of get either pushed into the travel lane or pushed out off the shoulder. There's not even a safe shoulder for bikers there. So this project will bridge that gap now that the study is complete. Staff will apply for a funding grant or for, to construct it in the next fiscal year. In far as supporting regional bike and pedestrian plans, this year, the Technical Advisory Committee and the Executive Board for SIMPO were working on the ACT UP Plan. The ACT UP Plan is a, is a study that SIMPO provided for the region, not just the city of Prescott, to integrate bicycle pedestrians into traffic on roadways. It was adopted in August of 2025, so staff will be looking at ways to implement those recommendations here in the city of Prescott. In addition to that, staff's been working on the Quad City Standard Details as part of our general engineering standards, and they have been updated to include sidewalk on both sides of the streets, on some street classifications, as well as bike lanes, depending on the street classification. Randy Purim, our city engineer, will be bringing those standards to you for adoption in early 2026. We've been making great headway on that. And I think that's all I have unless you have questions for me. Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much, Gwen. I'm going to move a little bit faster through the next few slides because we're going to hear more about some of these topics in the next couple of months. But result three has to do with our long-range water plan. That should be coming to the council here in November, and so that we can have a study session on that topic. Result four, also on this one, for folks who'd like to know more, we do have a section on Participate Prescott that has more details and asks for, for some input. Result four talks about our housing efforts, and we've had a few items on that topic over the last year. We'll be back at our next meeting on the 28th with a study session related to the workforce housing policy. And then again, December 7th for a study session related to some of the solutions in the Housing Needs Assessment. A lot of good progress again here. We're hoping the, or expecting the housing plan to be completed by July of 2026. I just got a glimpse earlier today at Prescott Valley's plan, and it looks a lot the same. So interesting that we're thinking along the same lines and, and moving in similar directions. Natural Environment, as we talk about open space and trail connectivity. During the legislative session this year, we worked on potential allocation for Glassford Dell's Regional Park. We didn't ultimately receive that, but we're excited to be applying for state grant early next year, continuing to work on that effort. We've also received notification this year of a potential BLM land that we might be able to use for park purposes in the area around Costco. And then additional trails that we're always working on. But one that is, or one I, one group that I think is exciting is, is SIMPO is working on not only roadway connectivity for pedestrians and bikes, but also trail connectivity and wildlife corridor connectivity. And so all of the jurisdictions in the area are participating in those groups and working to help make sure our trails are connected. We all have access to a lot of the, the natural amenities around the area. The General Plan section of this result will be something that we revisit as we get into the General Plan early next year. The last result under the Natural Environment has to do with mitigating and being able to respond more quickly to disasters. This is also something that we've been talking with the county on and working with the Office of Emergency Services. At some point, we'll probably come back and ask the council for staff support so that we have somebody on the team who focuses on this exclusively. But we are having good conversations with the county about how to move forward with some of our disaster preparation and mitigation. The last strategic priority is good governance. And for this section, I'm going to invite Mike Morris, our deputy city manager, to share a little bit.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So as Dallin mentioned just a few minutes ago, we've been working steadily on performance measures with all the departments. All the departments have now identified performance measures. We are now working on creating a dashboard through Open Gov for each department, where you'll not only have the raw data, but you also have bar graphs and line graphs and trend lines and some narrative to explain what those are so that it's very visible to the public. They can see it. They can look at it anytime. And so we're hoping by January that we have those individual dashboards for each department up and live. And there will also be an individual dashboard for this strategic plan with measures related to it as well, with the same information as I just spoke about. So we're hoping to have all those live come January so that the public can see them at any time they like. So then related to that, in the upcoming year, we want to then further build out levels of service. So we'd like to identify, so for example, a level of service response times for fire and police is a level of service. And so we want to build out in departments what that level of service is. So as we have budget discussions, departments, if they make a request for additional funding, will have to explain how it impacts or increases the level of service for that funding to be considered. So as we go forward, we build out this level of service a little more, and then the budget, any budget requests will be viewed against those levels of service and what the impact to the level of service would be if that budget increase was provided. So as we go forward, we'll continue to work in that method. And through all of this, we're trying to create transparency. And so Open Gov has been that platform. And we continue to update Open Gov. We used it for the capital budget this past year. This coming year, it'll also be used in the operating budget. And then we've just recently activated the procurement component of that in August. And then, as I just mentioned, the performance measures will hit there in January, and will be fully implemented with Open Gov and be transparent for council to see and for the public to see. So I'd be glad to answer any questions on any of that.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding Open Gov, I know we had like a, a couple of sessions right around budget time. Have you really seen the public? You know, do we have like some power users yet? Or are people just kind of getting in there and quickly checking out? Or how do we increase that? Will this additional measures that you build in, do you think that's what's going to take us to the next level of everyone's engagement with the tool?
Actually, as the operating budget is fully in there, we believe that will really grow the involvement with it. We can get you the actual participation that's happened with Open Gov. We'd be glad to get that for you. But we believe that the operating budget and then these performance measures will really activate that site.
Mayor Protem.
Mike, before you leave, I was actually just going to play off of her question. I had the same, similar question. Can we track the fact that people are using it? And have we had any response, good or bad?
Yes, we, we do have the actual numbers. I don't have them off the top of my head, but we do have numbers of how many people have actually gone to the site and looked for information. So we can, we can gather that information for you and provide it to you.
Yeah, I was just curious. I've used it, and I find it to be, you know, once you figure the app out, it's very easy to work with. And I was just wondering if you were getting some good feedback.
Yeah, there's been good participation so far, but we think it's really going to jump as we add this to information this coming year.
Thank you.
Very good. So just to, to kind of wrap up again, with appreciation of the council for providing the strategic plan and the direction that's helped us to know where to focus and where to put our efforts. I think we're able to show that there's a lot of progress being made in the city. There's a lot of great things going on. One of the goals we've talked about over the last year is also being able to talk more about those great things going on. Everybody seems to hear about the controversies, and not everybody hears about all of the wonderful things that are happening. We've just added or converted a halftime communications position into a full-time public engagement manager who is going to help us do that. We're excited to be sharing more of this with the public. And also looking forward to revisiting this strategic plan in January with the new council and making sure that our priorities are still aligned with where the council wants to go and, and moving forward into the new year. With that, I'm happy to answer any other questions the council may have.
Councilman Gambachy.
As UCLA coach John Wooden once said, if you fail to plan, you plan to fail. And the Ted Gambachy corollary, that is, if you don't work your plan, you don't need a plan at all. A couple of things about our priorities. One, I, I think we need to come up with a plan. Then I think we need to prioritize them, and then we need to work that plan. And I would suggest that we get a report not every six months, but every three months. And so that when, so the public is more familiar with, with the work that we're doing that we all agreed to do. Because during our council sessions, the residents come up with new ideas. And instead of just blindly pursuing the new ideas, we ought to ask the question, well, how does that fit within the priorities of the plan? So I would suggest getting a report every three months. Thank you.
So we may not have to do a complete update, but we can do a performance evaluation based upon the previous update so we can see how we're progressing. Mayor Protem.
Dallin, kind of along that track, I suggest that the study or the city have a newsletter that goes out, and we can call it Mythbusters so that we can refute all of the myths that are being circulated with our own message of truth. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that. I think we can move on to our next topic. City Clerk.
Presentation and discussion regarding the Prescott Rodeo Fairgrounds projects related to the 15.3 million distribution from the state of Arizona.
And before we begin this, city attorney, will you specifically read what the allocation that came from the state is expected to be used for? I'm starting to see a number of people, the public, that would like to dip into some of that 15.3 million dollars for areas that really aren't going to be accommodated, at least in this initial funding.
Yeah, I can read that. This is in Senate Bill 1735. That's the appropriations. It references the previous allocation in 2023 in that. So as I read it, and it refers to the laws 2023, that's what it's referring to. But it lays out what the monies may be used for. It says, "The State Treasurer shall distribute the monies appropriated pursuant to laws 2023, Chapter 133, Section 118, Paragraph 2, to the city of Prescott to improve and refurbish the rodeo grounds owned by the city. The money shall be promptly spent to promote use of the rodeo grounds, including landscaping, hardscaping, drainage, and the replacement improvement and increase capacity of aging water and sewer infrastructure, for upgrades to the main arena sound system and bleacher seating, for construction of new restroom facilities to accommodate large crowds during events, and for other site improvements that support the economic and tourism activity generated by the year-round use of the rodeo grounds for rodeo, equine, and related events."
So that does give us some guidelines on what our priorities are going to be for the use of this 15.3 million dollars. And the fact that the, I think the Senate Auditor General is going to be watching how we start using this money because there is a reference to prompt, prompt use of it within these categories. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. So as you know, at your last meeting, we approved a contract to continue our master plan. So we want to identify that these are actually separate items. The master plan is something that will be ongoing. We will continue to develop. But this funding, as was just read, was requested in 2023 and has gone through this process and identifies specific items to be worked on. So at your last meeting, you asked us to come back at this meeting to have a discussion about what projects we may want to begin work on. And so that is the purpose of this presentation. I do want to add here that you will see a list of projects here in just a second in this presentation. There are very, very rough estimates beside them. That's done for your reference, just so you have some idea of whether we're talking about hundreds of thousands, millions, you know, what point of reference we are to know how many projects we might be able to do for this 15 million dollars. A full scope will need to be done on all these projects. They'll have to be bid out, and contracts will have to come back to city council before these projects can actually start work. So I just want to make sure that you understand kind of the process of where we are. We're identifying today projects that we're going to begin work on, but the scope and bids, and then contracts will have to come back to city council for approval.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Okay, so I'll ask the follow-up question. If we agree on some elements today, and you will go off and do what you need to do, what would be the soonest we'll be starting to see these contracts roll in for us to approve?
Well, some of the projects are going to be smaller, so they're very quick. You know, they could be within two months. Some of the others are larger. For example, the water infrastructure, water and sewer infrastructure, it's going to take a little longer, so.
Could you, while you're going through and talking these so not only we understand, but the public understands, could you give us your best guesstimate of, you know, when, when we could potentially have these projects back?
I'll make that attempt, yes.
Thank you.
It will be tentative, let's put it that way, yeah. So with that, the city attorney just read the official language. This is a bulleted list from that language that identified the items that, that ought to be worked on with this 15.3 million dollars that was appropriated by the state. So here are items that are specifically identified in the state appropriation. The underground utilities, we're estimating $8 to $10 million for those. Installation of a new sound system, somewhere in the $500,000 to $600,000 range. Replace of seating and seating components and railings within the grandstand, somewhere in the $300,000 to $400,000 range. A new restroom building, exact location would have to be worked out. More scope is definitely needed there. More scope is definitely needed there to understand exactly what might go in those buildings. But we did, that's why the range there is quite large. It's a million to 1.5 because it's really not well-defined yet what will be in those buildings, other than restrooms, and how many restrooms. So those items are clearly defined within the legislative act. And so moving on, here are items that.
Yeah, I just did a rough cumin of calculation. This, those one, two, three, four items total up to almost 13 million.
Yeah, somewhere between 10 and 12.5 million, exactly right.
So you can see that that 15.3 million sounds like a lot of money, but it can be eaten up pretty quickly when we're dealing with some of these infrastructure needs.
Yes, sir, you're correct.
Mayor Protam?
So, thank you, Mayor. So Mike, I raised this, can we go back to that last file just real quick? That one, right there. I brought this up last time in council. I'm still confused. I don't know if you have a further answer on this at all, but, you know, when I, 45 years in the construction business, I owned a construction company. I built things for many, many, many years. How are we going to locate and size a sewer line and drainage if we don't have a plan? Are we planning on doing it twice? Are we going to, you know, right now relocate that sewer line based on a theoretical? I'm just confused about that. I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse. I know I mentioned it in the last one. So if you have any further information on that, I just don't know how that's possible unless we're going to go with an old plan.
I think from the timing perspective, what we're looking at here is we'll have to do a scope of work, put out a bid for an engineer to do the scope of work, and then actually bring a contract back to council. And so the master plan will be progressing during that time. So I'm going to guesstimate four to five months till we would have a contract back to council for that.
So you are planning on locating, just as it says right there, replacing and locating the sewer based on the plan that is coming up? Okay, good, because I just don't see how that can ever work where we're going to, we don't know what we're, how we're going to size it. We really theoretically don't know what, where the bathroom's going to go, what buildings are staying, what buildings are going, where they're going to be located.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. And that's why we want to get the process started to get an engineer on contract. And so that's what we'll begin with. And then we'll set aside the money to be used once we finish the master plan and that contract, then that.
If I look at the rest, let's, right there, installation of a new sound system. And maybe somebody's thought about this. If you're going to buy the sound system now and you're going to install it, make sure the installer understands it's going to have to be uninstalled and reinstalled in whatever we decide with the master plan. Same thing, replace the seating components. Do we know that the grandstands are staying in that location? Is it going to be purposely movable so we don't, you know, tear it up and we try to move it if we agree on another plan? I mean, for somebody who's spent a lifetime in construction, like I said, it's the cart before the horse. That's just my opinion, but I've got real experience in that for many years. So I hope that's all being thought about.
Yes, and that's, that's part of the challenge with this. Some things are clearly defined, some things are still a little, not so clearly defined.
Well, and I even have on my list here, you're going to do landscaping. Why would you do landscaping and then tear it all up when these construction guys get in there?
I'm going to address that in just a second.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Grady?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So not my area of expertise, but on the water, sewer, and drainage, it strikes me that I've read somewhere that some lines have been replaced in previous years, like something was done in 2011, some, some 2 million was spent in 2016 on the property. Is there a way, I actually have a twofold question. Is there a way that we can undertake some site assessment work under perhaps an existing, you know what the term is, Gwen knows it, but I don't, where you have an existing contract already out there for the year and try to put some of that site assessment as part of the initial investigation as opposed to just waiting five months to get under contract?
Well, it will take us, because there are, yeah, go ahead, it will take us, Glenn can address that of how long it will take us to actually get someone under contract in.
Thank you, Councilman Grady. I think what you're referring to is a feasibility study, and that will be part of the scope of work for the consultant that we hire. I will tell you that when it comes to the sewer infrastructure, one of the biggest issues with the sewer is that it runs diagonally through the middle of the arena. That's one of the biggest concerns. And it also conflicts with the drainage that comes through the site because of its proximity to Miller, I believe it's Miller Creek. Anyway, those things all tie together, so some feasibility will need to be looked at before we enter into any kind of scope to start designing relocation or construction of new infrastructure. But not only the sewer, but the water as well is going to have to be looked at. And to your point, until we know some of the uses on the property, we don't know what kind of fire flows we're going to need there. When we design a water system, we don't do it, we don't design it to meet domestic demands. In other words, the toilets flushing and the, the water coming out of the faucet. We do it to meet fire flows because those numbers are so much higher. And one of the things that staff has already identified is that the system on the fairgrounds is not looped. So when your water system is not tied into more than one trunk main, if you will, in other words, that would be a water line that's at least eight inches, if not 12 typically, your water pressures tend to be lower and it's more difficult to achieve those higher fire flows. So we currently have water in Fair Street, but it's not connected to the fairgrounds. We have water in Miller Valley, it's connected to the fairgrounds, which is good because the Miller Valley line is a 12-inch main, but the water's not looped. So we may need to do some, again, we don't know until we know what uses we're going to have there. We may need to do some looping of the water system to the mains on Fair Street, and they're smaller than eight inches, so they would have to be replaced to do that. So to your point, until we get a certain way along in the master plan, we won't know what kind of or to what extent the utility infrastructure will need to be upgraded. And I can also tell you that until we have a site plan, we won't be addressing drainage because that is very costly to do, and you don't only want to do it once to Mayor Protam's comment. I hope that helps.
Mayor Protam?
If I'm listening to Patrick Grady here, maybe what he was referring to were as-bilts. So I do remember back when Mayor Oberg was here, and I'm sure some of these people will know that, I think he allotted a little over $2 million for some new electrical wiring and a new panel, if I remember correctly. So do we know?
There was some new lighting put there, is my understanding also. I'm not sure exactly when that was.
Yeah, do you happen to know at this stage of the game if any of that is salvageable?
I believe the lighting will not go away. I believe the lighting will remain, depending on, again, where things end up.
Well, I think he brought up the panel, to the main panel. I'm just curious if we can save any of that stuff because that was a lot of money. Thank you.
So just to come back to timing, so obviously number one and number four are going to take some time, but we can begin to work on the engineering portion of number one and four. Two and three, we could move rather quickly, probably within 60 to 90 days, coming back to council with a contract. So this next list is all relatively smaller items. And as you see there, there's a need to replace the battery backup for the emergency lighting system, there's HVAC needs, the announcer stand and the seating that's above it, and then the moving of the statue and actually building a platform for it so that it can be located at the rodeo grounds. So all of these total just about a million dollars. And so with what we had before, we're somewhere between 11 and 13.5 million for these first two slides.
Councilman Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So with the grandstand on the previous page, I have heard that there's an underground spring on the property and that spring may in fact provide underground, maybe above-ground water flow that could in fact be under the existing grandstand. Is that something we're going to investigate as well before we start making improvements to the grandstand?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, we'll fully investigate that. I believe it's just to the side of it, but we'll, we'll find out. Absolutely.
Councilman Ferworth?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just trying to understand if, how can we positively impact Rodeo Week 26 with some of this money? So it sounds like number two and number four on the first page of projects is something that we could potentially positively impact Rodeo Week with, the sound system and some railings and seating. Is that the seedings with the backs? Is that what we're doing?
Yes, replacing the seating and the backs, yes.
Good. Okay. And then on the second page, I do think having emergency lighting when you have lots of people in a rodeo and if power was to go out, getting everyone out safely is critical. So that's probably something we could do to positively impact Rodeo 26, do you think?
Yeah, we believe that probably all four, the new announcer stand and seating structure we'd have to look at, but we believe possibly all four of these, at least three of the four could be done before the rodeo.
Okay. The, I don't really know what the Freeman and Party buildings are used for. Could you explain to me what those buildings?
Yeah, those are the buildings that normally hold quite a few receptions in. So the building, I'm trying to identify exactly, try to give you a good idea where exactly it is, but it's right across from, one of them is right across from the office.
Yeah, I actually was, I was looking on the map before coming today, and I saw the buildings, but I, I've been in some of the older stone ones. I didn't know what these two were, if that was where these community events are happening.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so that's HVAC. Is there no HVAC there now, or is it like so bad you don't even feel it?
Some of each, yes. Some, there is none and some that's in bad shape.
Okay. And the new announcer stand and suite seating structure, is that something that you think would be something that would go with a master plan or something that you're comfortable?
No, that would be something that we've tried to start initially so we could have it done before the rodeo this coming year.
So the master plan isn't going to affect that, where it would be located, like right now where we all know where the announcer stand is? It's going to be in the same space?
It'll have to be in that relatively same location, yes.
Okay, and when you come with a bid or a contract or whatever, I'd like to understand what the suite seating structure that goes along with that, what that means. I won't ask today. I like a picture. Okay. So I do think we could make some safety and, and quality of attendee and neighborhood with the sound system with starting this, but I'm getting, I'm getting nervous because you're up to 13 million and another million. And the way prices are going, we could be pretty well shot at our 15.3 per this recommendation. Am I thinking about that correctly?
You are, and we'd like, we'd like to keep a little bit in contingency, just in case one of the items is a little bit more than what we anticipated. So yes, you are right on, right on cue. And so then here is a list of other things, if there is funding available, that we'd like to work on, but we believe those first two slides are the most important items to begin work on. And as we have funding available, as you already just mentioned, we're somewhere in the 12 to 13 and a half range on those first two slides. So how much is going to be available for these is yet to be determined. And so we would come back at a later time, more than likely to say, okay, we have funding available, let's work on these next items. So we've had a lot of discussion, but I guess at this point we'd like direction on how you'd like us to proceed. And with that, I'll pause.
Councilman Gambogi?
Michael, I've always looked on the rodeo as kind of part of our heritage, something to be proud of and something that we all ought to celebrate every year. So thank you for the update. I'd say I'd agree to just about everything you have here, and like the old guy said, just get her done.
Yeah, I think we probably have a consensus here on being able to get the new sound system installed. We should be able to move forward with the location, scoping and size of the new restroom buildings. I wouldn't expect that they would change location. And replacing the seating and the railings, as long as we can be assured that the grandstand underneath those railings and seats is in sufficiently refurbished condition to be able to maintain safety over a decade or longer. So I think those are the things that I'd like to see funded and planned for, that we might be able to get done before next year's rodeo. And that would show to the state that we are taking prompt steps to utilize that, that money. And then with the master plan being developed, then additional costs like underground utilities can be planned for and located. So I would ask the rest of the council to make their recommendations on our next steps. Councilman Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm in general support of the comments that several have made about moving some of these projects forward. I have a couple of cautionary notes with respect to the sound system itself. We have to be sensitive to neighborhood concerns here. I don't know that installation of a new sound system just needs to be looked at, make sure it's done in coordination, obviously, with, with the steering committee in that particular area. I don't know that we've agreed on the size, as someone mentioned, of how many restrooms we really need. I like the points that Councilwoman Ferworth was making about, you know, kind of some of the public safety pieces that could be done. And finally, I am concerned that, and I realize this can't be done in time, but I'm concerned that one of the key issues for the neighborhood may well be the fencing and buffering along Gale Gardner and Fair Street. Those streets may somehow get torn up too during the infrastructure improvements. And I don't think we should lose sight of the fencing and buffering needs of this whole program.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that about. I was actually going to mention that, and I forgot to do that. We would like to set aside money for that project. It's just the timing of it is not great right now, but we would like to set aside some funding towards that, perhaps maybe $500,000 to say, we want, we think that's important to do, but it's all about the timing.
Mayor Protam, what's your preference?
Well, I think I just basically said what I said, but I'm trusting that you guys are going to use a licensed bonded contractor that understands the phasing of all of these projects. Because one thing I don't want to do, since we don't have a lot of money, see that money wasted because somebody gets in there and does something wrong. In the construction industry, there is a definite phasing of how things are to go. For example, you're not going to do the landscaping and then get a backhoe in there and, you know, cut your way through the property. So are you, do you know a contractor that you're using yet, or have you not even gotten that far?
We would have, we'd have to do bids.
Okay, good.
We'd come back to city council.
Yeah, well, I'm all for that, so long as they've got a deep seeded knowledge. Basically, that's it. I mean, I have no problem with any of this. I want to see the rodeo move forward. I want it all to happen. But I also, having spent all those years in construction, know how quickly things can go awry and how scope, it's called scope creep, can change if we don't have a plan. It's like starting a job without a set of construction documents, and that does worry me, and I want to go on the record with that. It just doesn't work that way. So good luck with it, but think it through. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
We're in complete agreement with you. Today is really about identifying the projects we want to work on so we can develop that scope, so it's very clear-cut, so we can do bids.
Councilwoman Ferworth?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I gave most of my priorities earlier. Honestly, if we're running out of money, I would, well, I, I understand the new announcer stand. I really do want to prioritize especially the buffering along, for the neighborhood on Gale Gardner and so, you know, for me, the suite seating structure would be something. If I, if we're running over and we can't make it all happen, I think the neighborhood gets one with some buffering, some trees, a few things like that. So the suite seating structure for me is, you know, the one that I would wait for the master plan and the future funding, but I, I'll admit, I don't understand what, why these are included together as if they're one building. So that worries me, but I prefer the neighborhood get something beyond the sound system.
And we will add the fencing and landscaping in. It's just a matter of timing when we can do it, but we'll set aside that funding for that purpose.
Councilman Gamboge?
I see this as an interim plan and I'm not going to micromanage it. You guys are the subject matter experts, so just when it comes time to do something, come back with those, with a final plan.
Can we go to public comment at this time?
We can, Mayor. The first card I have is from Susan Davidson.
Hello and thank you for letting me speak. I am a member of the rodeo board and I'm also a member of the county fair board. And I've been coming to several meetings and listening and I'm very pleased to hear that we're finally moving forward. It has taken quite a while and to answer your questions, there are minimal things now we can get done before 2026. Can't tear anything up. I think that some of the projects they've identified, the announcer's new sound system is to please the neighborhood. It will not be nearly as disruptive of what it's been in the past. We've talked to several of the sound systems, so I think they'll approve that. The bathroom situation is implorable. The bathrooms that we have now, I don't think any of you women would want to go into. So the thought of maybe if we can't move forward with the new bathrooms, maybe we should look at maybe refurbishing the ones that we have. As far as the fair goes, everything you've talked about doing will only enhance the fair as far as where the people are able to go. The buildings that the fair uses, our barn A is deplorable. It leaks. Our barn B, we don't even use for the fair anymore. We've moved all of the activities that used to be in that barn into the bottom of the mac and or into other buildings. So getting some upgrades would be very helpful to the fair also, but moving forward, we need to do it quickly. Thank you.
Sue Manuel?
Good afternoon, Mayor, council and fellow residents of Prescott. My name is Sue Manuel, a resident of Prescott for many, many years. I appreciate the city's commitment to leading a new master planning process. I am hopeful that this new approach and the hired architectural firm will have a more transparent, inclusive process than those that we have seen in the past. The residents love the rodeo. The world's oldest rodeo is a point of pride and we all have heard how important it is to Prescott's identity. I would like to see the annual rodeo succeed. My concern is not with the rodeo itself, but with the proposed expansion of activities beyond the scope of the historic event. I would like to request that the repair improvement plan being proposed focus on responsible upgrades that support the annual rodeo rather than on any major expansion that creates a year-round event center in the middle of a residential neighborhood. We all need to stop and take a moment. Let's get Arizona State Gift Clause compliant lease right now. It looks as if PFD is taking over the entire fairgrounds property, which is not what the current lease states and they're, what they're entitled to. Who is responsible for what over there? We still need a feasibility study and a business plan from PFD to be done before sinking 15.3 of taxpayer money into an unnecessary repairs or upgrades that may have to be undone. Pressured, stop being pressured by Fincham and others. This project was never shovel-ready and we are all, won't be, and we all want to get it right the first time. Nothing good has ever come from decisions made under pressure. Let's get our horse and cart in the right order. PFD has made a list of what they think they are want to be done. I think the neighborhood, the citizens of Prescott, the extension, the auto club and the farmer's market need to have some input into this list. After all, it is our and our state's tax money that is being spent. As you know, there are no city dollars for any further work. Please clarify the current list. Who are the other users? Where does the money that they pay to use their property go? What is the city's responsibility? What is PFD's responsibility? What are the exact areas of the fairgrounds that have to, they have the right to use and when in the current lease? Let's get all of our ducks in a row and in the correct order before spending money under pressure from any source. Let's make sure parties involved, all parties involved here have the correct information about the infrastructure, not just guesses.
Rex Hinshaw?
Mayor, council and staff, thank you for having this meeting and allowing us to discuss this. I'm the vice president of the Board of Directors of Prescott Frontier Days. I'm also an architect and a land planner, so I understand some of the issues going on and some of the timing and logistics involved. One thing I would like to, I would like to add to what has been said here before is that, first off, I think the grandstands are considered historic in nature. I do know where the spring is that has been spoken about and that is not running through the middle of the grandstand. So I think you're going to find that that won't be an issue, but that will be studied by the GH2 group and so we'll make sure of that. So I believe that the sound system improvement will be safely done and not have to be redone. And what, we've had sound tests done and we are planning on placing the, the speakers underneath the grandstand canopy instead of trying to put, instead of putting the speakers across the arena and containing it as much as possible within the grandstands. The announcer stand goes along with that because that's where the equipment for the new sound system would be. And I don't think that there would be any chance of wasting any money after doing it again with the improvement of the seating and, as well, because I think you're going to find that the grandstands are, are just fine. So I appreciate your consideration on these matters and I think you're going in the right direction. Thank you very much.
Kim Lopez?
Good afternoon, Mayor, council and staff. I am Kim Lopez, the president of Prescott Frontier Days Rodeo. Thank you so much for doing this meeting and listening to the things that do need to be done right away. I do want to address, blow us to you, what the dock party and the Freeman are. There is no heating in the dock party and there is swamp coolers in both. We have had to have them repaired several times. They're at their end. In the dock party building is the museum for the rodeo, so not something that we can not have heating and cooling in. Patrick, to answer some of your questions about the sound system, there was a study done. We do have that study available. It has been given to Michael as well, so you can look to see what that is with the decibels and everything else. But I want to again say thank you so very much for taking the time to make this a priority. With our America 215 coming up, we want to make sure that this looks beautiful. Thank you.
Ralph Hess?
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. I'm Ralph Hess. I live here in Prescott. I'll share a secret. The city's lease agreement with Prescott Frontier Days, in which Prescott Frontier Days effectively pays no rent, violates the state's constitution's gift clause prohibition. And your staff's presentation proposes you compound this violation with additional gifts to Prescott Frontier Days. Staff's proposals are gifts according to the terms of your own lease agreement. Paragraph eight A of that agreement provides in part, quote, "The party's acknowledge that PFD accepts the premises and their present as-is condition." And paragraph 10 provides in part, "The city has no present or future duty or responsibility to make alterations or improvements to the premises. PFD shall at its sole expense make all alterations and improvements as it may deem necessary." Prescott city councils have been giving taxpayer gifts to Prescott Frontier, Frontier Days for years, including allowing Prescott Frontier Days to reap revenues from special events such as the recent antique show held on this city-owned property. Today's presentation appears to be a furtherance of that practice by proposing spending public monies to expand city-owned facilities to benefit one sole tenant, Prescott Frontier Days, who pays effectively no rent. Here are just a few specifics. Installation of a new sound system, a gift. Replace seating components and railings in the grandstand, a gift. New restroom buildings, a gift. HVAC system at Freeman and Party Buildings, a gift. New announcer stand and suite seating structures, a gift. You already heard the terms of the lease and likely more. At a minimum, the city must renew, renegotiate a new lease with Prescott Frontier Days in accordance with resolution number 2023-1861, process before expending any public funds to make any alterations or improvements to the rodeo fairgrounds for the sole benefit of Prescott Frontier Days. And who knows, perhaps the master plan process the city has commissioned will demonstrate better, highest and best uses for this city-owned property. How can council responsibly expend any public funds until that master plan process is completed? Some of your questions that came from the dais today demonstrated exactly that. Thank you.
Howard Mechanic?
Mayor and council, Ralph had what he called a secret. I heard, maybe I have another secret. I heard that Prescott Frontier Days doesn't want to sign a new lease. Now, the city said on several occasions that a new lease will be negotiated. So there's a problem here. We have an oncoming train that's going into a train wreck, a legal train wreck. The Arizona Constitution's gift clause prohibits state or local jurisdictions from giving public resources to private entities without consideration of similar value. What staff is proposing is unconstitutional gift if there's not a new lease that provides for reasonable rent. Before the city commences spending money on improvements to the property, it needs a new lease, a new lease that could be contingent on whatever new expenditures will be made. We can't wait until after some of the expenditures are made to see if there might be some new lease sometime in the future that will supposedly somehow make the approved expenditures then constitutional. That won't work. Maybe not all of the proposed expenditures are gifts, but most of them are. 20 years remain on PFD's lease. The issue isn't whether the city may get some residual value from these expenditures after those 20 years. That's not the issue. The issue is whether PFD is getting a gift during those 20 years. To avoid the train wreck, the city attorney needs to inform the public and council and PFD that a new lease is required. Over the past many years, violations of the gift clause have been rampant by both state and various local jurisdictions. They aren't constitutional and they must stop. In the last two years, I've initiated two successful lawsuits that enforced the state's gift clause. The first was regarding PFD's appropriation and resulted in a summary judgment.
30 seconds, Mr. Mechanic.
The second regarding the Turf Paradise appropriation resulted in a prompt consent decree by the attorney general. I don't want to be one of the few people in the state who needs to continue to enforce the gift clause, but if I need to be, I will be.
Deb Thalassidis?
My issue with the presentation today actually is more questions. First, what was kind of disappointing is the proposal that you all are signing off on is based on no criteria. There was no input from anybody other than PFD and it's basically a blank check to spend 15.3 million. I watched a couple of you try to put some parameters around what's being, what projects should be done, what should be done first that isn't going to get torn up later, what benefits the neighborhood and the users of the rodeo grounds. So let me get to my questions. I can't find the money. I'm one of the nerdy users that actually goes to OpenGov, so thank you, Dawn, for my private portal. I can't find the money. You've not received the money formally unless I missed it on an agenda, like you do with airport grants, and you haven't appropriated it. And more importantly, the form that you're required to file with the state auditor doesn't appear to have the capacity to spend this money. So that's question one. It's a technical question. Where's the money and when can we start following it on OpenGov? Next question. We've been told on the steering committee that none of the 15.3 million can be used for the master plan, yet today everyone kept referring to, to the master plan. All the discussion today has been about improvements for the rodeo, not improvements to the grounds in total, which is what the legislation actually said. Didn't say improvements for PFD. So what are we going to tell the public? Why are we doing a master plan? It looks like the state already did one and they said, we're going to do these things. What do you tell the public about the $145,000 we're spending on a consultant at this point? What, really, what value are they going to add? And like Ralph, I need to talk about resolution 2023-1862. Some of you weren't on council in July of 2023, but we had a unanimous passage of a resolution that said when there was expansion of events or infrastructure on the grounds, that there was a process that was going to be followed. And in the interest of my three minutes, I'm not going to go through that, but I'm hoping that you'll consult with your attorney and make sure that you follow that resolution because the community wants to be involved in this. Thank you.
Hozie Nash?
Mr. Mayor, council, staff, thank you, citizens. I'm here representing myself, nobody else. I've had four generations of families sit on those benches at the rodeo grounds and I would hate to see them ripped up, thrown away. I think they're salvageable and I would like to suggest- I think they're salvageable, and I would like to suggest that they be donated to YEI Exceptional Industries here in Maricopa County to be reconstructed into Prescott Frontier Days rodeo commemorative furniture pieces that people could buy at Waters or the Bird Barn or whatever it's called now, or True Value. I think people would like a piece of that history, and I would like you to consider it. Also comes to mind, I see that one of the items is the Justin Room. These are important rooms for our rodeo contestants. They need, if they are hurt, to have a specific place to come and get treatment before they would be transported to a hospital. So I think that should come higher up on the priority list. Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
Well, I appreciate the public input. I think there's some valuable suggestions there that the council needs to consider. We now have about 13 minutes before our voting meeting starts, so we will adjourn this study session and reconvene at 3:00 PM.